Like the call is meeting order. This meeting is improperly advertised and posted in accordance with Public Call 75, Chapter 231, has been advertised by the Main City Press and posted in City Hall and the website.
Allegations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we may stand, remain in silence. Please keep in mind bears, the Enders family, Bob Enders' lifetime. President of Estor Manor has just passed away recently. Please keep in mind our service, men and women as well, who are overseas protecting our best interests.
And be thankful for the safe return of some.
Dilch?
Here.
Ms. Owen?
Present.
Ms. Parks?
Present.
Ms. Bensker?
Here.
Mayor Waddesley?
Present. I make a motion up for meeting to the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone in the public? Mrs. Casa Grant?
Hi, I see the Second Amendment is on the agenda. And I'd like to read from Wikipedia what the Second Amendment sanctuary is defined as. It's a state, county, or locality in the United States that has adopted laws or resolutions that oppose or purport to prohibit or impede law enforcement agencies within that state, county, or locality from assisting in the enforcement of certain gun control measures enacted by other government bodies. Proponents of such sanctuary law or resolutions contend that various gun laws, such as universal background checks, high-capacity magazine bans, assault weapon bans, red flag laws are a violation of the rights guaranteed within the Second Amendment. And I appreciate that people are dedicated to this idea. But when we're seeing murders arise, crime rise, people being killed by guns, some of these measures are very sensible. And I hope our city council will recognize that this is not a position we need to be involved in one way or the other. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public?
I'll second that.
There was a motion. Thank you very much. Mr. Gosden?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I have concerns about the Sixth Avenue issue. It's listed under, under room business. I see that the situation indeed continues literally as I am speaking now. Literally as I am speaking now. My question, I guess, is, again, who is responsible for enforcing our codes and our laws here in this city? Our?
Our zoning officer is.
Our zoning officer is.
So who reports to? Reports to the council and to the zoning board as well.
And to the zoning board. The zoning, I only have so much time. I guess what I'm getting at is here is that the Planning and Zoning Board is appointed by the mayor. The mayor sits on the Planning and Zoning Board. I'm being told that the zoning officer is responsible for enforcing the laws and codes of our city. We have innumerable laws and codes in our city. I'm not sure that he is indeed responsible for the law. I wonder if, in fact, the person ultimately responsible for enforcing the laws, rules, codes of our city is not, in fact, the mayor. If indeed the planning board is appointed by the mayor, the zoning officer is hired by the mayor. The mayor administers the city. I've been told by council members that they have no authority in this situation. I guess my question is posed to the solicitor. What do we, as citizens, do if we begin to sense or begin to believe that we're getting no action on the enforcement of our laws and codes?
Mayor, I'd like to, to point something out before the solicitor answers that. John Moore, the clerk acting. I talked with Wayne before the meeting. And, because I knew that, obviously, this was gonna come up. And I don't know if he's still waiting to come into the meeting.
I'm, I'm right here. And I can answer it when I'm given an opportunity to answer. And I can explain the law, and I can explain what's going on. Anytime anybody is ready for me, I'll be more than happy to do that.
Mr. Brownson has his three minutes.
That's, that's his line.
He's approaching that deadline, Larry.
So I guess ultimately, my question is, and I'm understanding that there has been a court appearance or a non-appearance in court. I'm understanding that the judge is saying that his hands are tied. What are we doing about getting our court open? I'm told that because it was a virtual court, that the party didn't have to appear. I'm getting bits and pieces, but I'm seeing that the project continues. It continues as nothing is getting really done. And every day that goes by, it continues. I, I will tell you, I have personal experience. There is now a trailer on the property. I don't know how big, to be honest. I've only seen pictures, but there's a trailer on the property. I have personal experience with our zoning office demanding and forcing the removal of trailer things like this, containers, from other properties in town. I have personal experience with that, where a CO was withheld because there were trailers on property that didn't have proper permits to be there. And here we have this, and this isn't about Larry Gosden. It really is, if this man follows all the rules and becomes our neighbor, I will welcome him. We will all welcome him. But in the meantime, he is playing with us. He is having, he is playing at his hobby. He keeps his pet bull on the property. In my opinion, and I'm closing, in my opinion, when you have a hobby and a pet, you have it at your home, where you live. He doesn't live there. He hasn't given, been given the permission to live there. In fact, he has given the city no sense whatsoever that he is ever gonna live there. The only thing that this party has done, as far as I know, has been to thumb his nose at our codes, at our zoning officer, and at our court. That's what I believe is happening. I'm looking forward to being corrected.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Wayne, I'm gonna ask you to respond, please. That's the purpose of why you're here.
Certainly, thank you. Okay, I'm gonna explain the law to you, Mr. Gosden.
I prefer to have the solicitor explain the law, but thank you.
Well, I'm not really concerned about what your-
Wayne, could you address the board, please?
Yeah, okay. What happened is, the gentleman is doing exactly what he said he's doing, okay? There's a 40-foot container on the property now, okay? The bull is still there. He's got a, a, some type of machine back there digging. Now, I sent him violation notices. And he came in this evening, and he told me, go, what do you mean, I can't do what I want on my own property? And I said, you can do what you want on your own property within reason, but you have to do it within the regulations. You just don't go do what you want. You can't put accessory structures on your property without a principal use on the property. A principal use would be a house. I explained to him how he had to pave into Sixth Avenue to get back to the house. I explained to him what the proper way was, to make a plan, to turn in the engineer with a fee. The engineer, if he approved the plan, then he could go ahead. Now, so he didn't listen to anything. So I wrote him five summonses, okay? All to do with this development and the road. That's what you do after nobody pays attention to a violation. I wrote him five summon, sent, uh, summonses, excuse me. His first court appearance was the fourth Monday in May. And he appeared in court virtually. And they gave him 30 days to straighten the problem out, okay? This is the judge, all right? Obviously, he hasn't done that, all right?
So what was the disposition of the summonses? Have they been adjudicated or?
No, 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 just, I'm gonna finish, okay? So now, his next court date was the fourth Monday in June. He went from the fourth Monday in May to the fourth Monday in June. He, he failed to appear, okay? And his next court date was July the 28th, the fourth Monday in July. Our judge in Estor Manor canceled the court for some reason, because he couldn't be here. I mean, I don't know. And so now, he's scheduled to come to court at the end of August. Now, let me explain something. I explained this Planning and Zoning Board already, but I'm gonna explain it again tonight. Right now, the Attorney General in New Jersey, because of the COVID, has told all the judges, and it's, it's an all for the judges, the judges cannot enter bench warrants for failure to appear right now, unless it's like a murder charge, a DWI, like a major felony, okay? So, in every court I go in, and by the way, there's four of them, this being one, okay? These people know that if they fail to appear, they're not gonna get a bench warrant. So they don't appear, all right? And so, my hands are tied because the judge canceled the court the end of July. It was rescheduled, but that doesn't mean that he'll appear at the end of August. I can't tell you whether he'll be here. It's not the end of August yet.
All I can say is, Mr. Card, if there was some type of correspondence that was sent to him, he certainly was able to receive the summonses. You would send correspondence explaining to cease and dismiss any and all activity. You would send that certified, if that's what you choose to do.
Well-
And which also, my strongest suggestion is, before you do anything, you really should be talking to the prosecutor. Not to the governing body.
Well, I have talked to the prosecutor. The judge canceled the court.
Sometimes we can get emotional. Everybody can get emotional. But the reality is, I think the prosecutor is a very level-headed guy. He'll take your guidance from him.
I understand that.
And I'm sure you do.
They canceled the court. I mean-
I have no control over that.
And I, and I don't either. I have no control over it either, okay? If I go, I can't tell the judge, well, you're gonna hold the court, and you're gonna issue a bench warrant. He's gonna laugh at me. I can't help he canceled the court, and I can't help that he can't issue a bench warrant, okay? And, I mean, Mr. Trippkin, Trippkin is fine. I can talk to him about it, but we've already talked about it three or four times. If they don't have the court, and they can't issue a bench warrant, there isn't much I can do. Go ahead, please.
What, what is the remedy? Is he told, get the bull out of there, get your trucks out of there?
Well, that certainly is the remedy, but I can't go down there and physically make him do it.
But I'm saying, he knows exactly what he's supposed to do.
Oh, he knows. Yeah, he's just doing what he wants. He knows it. Why do you think he didn't, he failed to appear in court in the end of June? He, 'cause he knows that he don't, he doesn't stand a chance. But it's one of these niches with the regulations they have right now, with failure. See, if the judge can issue a bench warrant, you have a better chance of somebody coming to court, because they figure, well, if they get stopped on traffic stop, you know, they're gonna, they're gonna, they'll take them right to jail, okay? If they don't have, if he injured, if he, if he issued a $1,000 cash bench warrant, they don't have $1,000 in their pocket. They're going right to jail until somebody brings $1,000 to the jail. But right now, the judge can't issue bench warrants. So it isn't that nobody's trying to do anything, and I understand it's continuing, okay?
As we speak.
I understand that.
This minute.
But-
Trees are being cut right now. Continue, Mr. Card.
I totally understand everything, but, I mean, I, I, there's nothing I can do. Now, I'll, since, I'll ask Mr. Lafferty something. It was brought to my attention, this is not Mr. Lafferty.
Yes, speak very loudly.
I'm sorry. Well, it says in front of me, okay? It was brought to my attention that possibly the, the small path he's made to go back off of Cape May Avenue on Sixth, that possibly the city public's works could go dump piles of dirt there and block it off, so it wouldn't be so easy for him to get back there. But I can't tell him to do that, and I can't tell you, I would think it's legal, but I don't know that.
I don't think that that's legal to do that.
I, I don't have any idea.
But he's been dumping crushed concrete in, in the-
But he's not blocking the road. Let, let the solicitor give an answer about something.
But Wayne, you said that the situation at the courts is 100% right, unfortunately. Because, and you see this in courts throughout the camp, because judges are not able to issue bench warrants, too many defendants just take that as license to do whatever they want. Um, and also, Mr. Gosden's concern is a legitimate one, that you have an ongoing violation, or maybe serious violations. Unfortunately, short-term, there's not a real remedy for that. Long-term, however, whatever this gentleman is proposing to do on his property, or doing on the property, that is a violation of any of the codes, um, he can't continue that. Once, once it gets resolved and determined that he is in fact in violation, which, again, unfortunately, only comes from the court through the process of the adjudication of tickets that Wayne's been issuing. Mayor's right, it's not really an option for the city to take its own action, uh, such as blocking access to the property. And to the extent that he's doing anything to the property which is, A, not permitted, and B, ultimately not allowed for him to do, whether by a zoning board or some other board that has the power to do that, uh, he has to, A, cease doing whatever it is he's doing that's a violation, but also, uh, can be forced to return the property, if it's deemed possible, uh, to the condition that it should have been in, had he not violated and done whatever it is he's doing there. And that may be through civil action later. Uh, a much bigger subject, I'm sure, than we want to talk about tonight, but there are other options at the end of the process to, to attempt possible, return the city and the neighborhood to where it was before he started doing whatever it is he's doing.
By the way- I just realized something, though, Mr. Widdo. If we are to block off that road, that would have to be done by ordinance.
Yeah, if that's a city-
If it's a city street, and it's a public right-of-road, right-of-way to a roadway, that would have to be done by-
Mayor, you're wrong about that. That's not accurate at all.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, let's, uh, answer that.
But that's not accurate. You're assuming that this is a properly placed road, that's been surveyed and marked, and was put in keeping with how the tax map shows it, and that's not at all true.
And you're assuming, and you're assuming that the road is not a municipal speed?
It's not. It's absolutely not.
So then, if it's his property-
Have you been on it, Mayor?
If it's his-
Have you been on it, Mayor?
Excuse me, I'm speaking. If he, if he's blocking, if we're blocking off his own personal property, he can't do that. He just can't do that.
Well, we're not, we're talking about all the way out of Cape May.
It is presumed to be a municipal street.
No, it's not.
It's presumed to be a municipal right-of-way.
It's presumed to be a paper street, okay? And therefore, it's a paper street.
I'm approving municipal right-of-way.
If you're going to block it off, you have to do that by ordinance.
I don't know that.
It's 2,300 feet of a path that someone cut through the woods, across state land, a lot of it. That is not, I mean, I'll bet you dollar to a donut, most of it is not in keeping with what shows on the tax map for the placement of Sixth Avenue.
It's not Park State Police. They have a Park State Police, and you believe he has cut, uh, state land.
Is that what you're going to do for remedy?
That's what the zoning officer is here for. That is not any action the council will take. That is the zoning officer.
So then, the mayor's not gonna do anything.
That is the zoning officer's prerogative and authority. Nobody on council has that authority.
So then, as the mayor, you're not gonna do anything.
Mr. Dilch, you can spin it however you would like, but I'm gonna tell you right now-
Well, this is your chance to tell us what you're gonna do.
I know which direction that you're going with this here.
Which direction? There's, what are you gonna do?
Do we have that authority to be doing that? Yes or no?
Well, I can give you the yes and no. Uh, there's a couple of questions, which apparently there's disagreement on the facts behind it. I don't need to resolve that. If there, if what he's doing, in terms of cutting a path or, you know, otherwise interfering with a designated right-of-way, whether it's a paper street or not, then that is, it's a own separate violation, because no one has the right to, you know, keep the town's rights away.
He has a violation for that already. And a summons.
Yeah, so it sounds like Wayne is finding a correct course of action to eventually get that adjudicated. If it's on, in whole or in part, um, his own property, generally speaking, probably not a violation, but it would depend on what exactly he's doing, because that may be in violation of one of the city's other regulations. If it's on, in whole or in part, state-owned land, then that is an issue for the state, probably, I'm assuming, through the D E P. And that's something for which the city or private parties can lodge a complaint, if they feel, you know, there's something that has been done on state-owned land that can't be done or shouldn't be done.
And then I'm gonna authorize you to send a letter over to the state, and to the D E P, indicating that there is a, a possibility that there is a violation in which the state land has been approached upon, and trees have been cut, or whatever. I don't really think that that's the authority of the council. That's a very legal decision to make, and I'm leaving that within the law office to take care of that.
All right, I see.
Is that, is that the right call?
If pine lands is already sending a violation.
Oh, pine lands has already-
They, they send a violation for disturbing and not getting pine lands' approval for what he's doing back there. Not the road, but the other stuff he's doing. I turned him into the pine lands, they sent him, sent him a violation also, okay?
Does pine lands have the same problem right now, no, no chief in the court?
They got no teeth in the office. They're all working from home, and it's hard to get old to do anything.
And you can send, because I did have to do this recently, when you send something to pine lands to request action of any kind, the first response you'll get, you have to do it online, because you won't reach any of the platforms. The first response you'll get will be, uh, we received your communication. Uh, give us 30 days, and we'll get back to you. Don't call us within the 30 days.
You, you have a much better chance of processing through the local authorities than you do having the pine lands do it. I can, I can tell you that.
Well, what if he did encroach on the state land? Does the state land work?
That'll be, that would be a separate issue. If he violated any pine lands' regulations, the pine lands' regulations, which don't apply across the board, probably on property, new street property. If he is doing something on property that's not, basically, as a trespass on state land, then that's gonna be an issue for the state to take appropriate action.
It's a civil matter between who owns the land that he traspasts on and him.
So my office's question would be that your office is gonna need to send a letter to the D E P, and they want C C over the State Park Police as well. Because they have jurisdiction off the, uh, seat of riding for Estor Manor all the time. So they are getting this.
Mayor, if, if I may, may make one last comment. My, I will, very quickly. My concern in all of this is the threat that this brings to our zoning ordinance and zoning code. And that we have roads all around town that represent the same thing. I think that we need to also confront that threat and bring, I would like to see the planning board attorney brought into that, and heads brought into this, so that we can be absolutely certain that we are on firm ground to say what we've said.
Solicitor's gonna send a letter out over to the, the end of the State Park Police, and hopefully, they're gonna take some action. I have confidence in Wayne. He's gonna follow through with Dylan. At least it's the right thing to do, if with the enforcement of it, if it's deemed possible.
Yes, there is. Isn't anybody would like to get it resolved any more than I would, okay?
We have, we have issues going on in the city that have been going on for years.
I understand that. And these people aren't in court either. You know, I can name you four more people that didn't come to court, that I had in court, because they know they don't have to appear, okay? And some of them are ongoing issues.
The Senator Labor is gonna have to face the music.
I understand that. Now, I would, if, I'd stay here tonight if the judge is here and they face it. But I gotta wait till they do what they gotta do.
But the last question was about improving, you can't improve a public roadway, a street.
There is, there is a, your engineer is sitting right there.
This guy's dumping concrete. He's improving it to drag his junk back there.
There is an ordinance in our book on the way to improve a street. He was informed of that. I gave him all that information, and I told him what to do, what plan to him. Turn in to the engineer. The engineer goes over, reviews it. If he accepts it, then he can improve the road. He's done none of that. He's been informed of all, everything that he needs to be informed of, and he's chose not to do it.
Where does he live at? I don't want to sit here and address before that.
In, uh-
Dennis Township.
Yeah, in Dennis Township, uh, outside Cape May Courthouse. All right?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
It's not fully opened to the public.
Yes, we are.
What is the public question? And I'm asking about this situation.
I'm sorry.
What about the board of board? How about animal control? I mean, does it have running water out there?
I called Atlantic County, I called the Atlantic County- I called the Atlantic County Board of Health about that already, okay? Let me tell you something. And I'm gonna be quite honest with you. I deal with the Cullen County Board of Health and the Atlantic County Board of Health all the time. As far as I'm concerned, they're both useless, okay?
I wasn't accusing, I was suggesting.
All right, one of the first things we did-
Do you need me anymore?
I think we've pretty much touched base on what's gotta be done.
Yes, I'm doing what I can do. And nobody wants to get it done with more than I do.
Thank you, Wayne.
Have a good night.
First thing we did was contact Animal Control. It seemed like the most logical thing to do. They said they can't do anything about it. We have to tell the State Police.
I sent them a violation.
Called the State Police, and two squad cars came out with two men and one.
I know, I've been watching.
They couldn't get back there in their cars. I took them back in my truck. The only concern that they had was, does the animal have water? On that, there is no source of running water. The guy's gotta take water back there every day. According to, you know, Google search, you need 30 gallons a day for a bull.
He has shelter. He's got a shelter.
He's got a little baby thing about the size of that handicap elevator. But the State Police found water, so they just, they couldn't get out of their faces.
I just don't think it'd be public safety, too. I mean, that's a dangerous animal.
It may be the D, the D and D fishing game can do something about it.
Anyone else, anyone else in the public? Mr. Broke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, uh, let me say, for what it's worth, uh, that the comments that were made by Mrs. Casa Grant and Mrs. Olson, I fully associate myself with those. Um, I think that taking some sort of Second Amendment sanctuary stand may be a PR move. It may be helpful for the first Tuesday after the first Monday in November for some. Uh, but actually, for the purposes of the community, it is not worth it. And also, considering that from time to time, we've had people who have had their firearms confiscated for allegations of domestic violence. Um, the last thing we need to have is something that enables, uh, those types of tragedies, rather than does what can be done to prevent them, for what that's worth. Second, uh, related to the concern that Mr. Gosden lifted up, um, this is why I have suggested repeatedly over the years, with various folks who sit at the dais, that the global solution for this, not a perfect solution, but a global one, will be to erase all of the paper streets in the city. Because that would mean that no one is under the misapprehension, accidentally, on purpose or otherwise, that, oh, there's a street, and I got property out there, and I'll go do whatever I want to do with my property, because we're in America. If there is no paper street, then that presumption does not exist. And then if they want to come to the planning board- And then if they want to come to the planning board, and they want to create a street, and they want to go through the process of improving the street to get to some property they own, they can do that. But right now, we are constantly in a cycle of reaction, rather than being proactive.